We have one minute. Ready to get started.
Fifteen seconds.
Madam Clerk, please read the row.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Creighton Smith indicated she will not be in attendance today, and I believe that we have Noel Anderson and Jamie Knudsen on virtual as well. So would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Dave Bozen, soon to be at large currently, War Two.
Soon to be the other way around, but please remove your hats and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Duly noted.
You can take that pay cut.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda, as well as the approval of the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting as proposed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. It's now time for public comments. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, let us know your thoughts.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, and I'm here to follow up on four eleven Almond, follow up on my November twentieth meeting when I was talking to you last about the papers that I gave you, Mayor, and I know you don't have them with you, but one was a letter from John Deere Life Insurance Company, Jacksonville, Illinois, from a Ms. Cozel Harris to a Ms. Farmer, saying that John Deere could not let my father increase his coverage over the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That letter was dated nineteen eighty-six, and the policy had been in force for quite some time. In nineteen ninety-four, there was a check wrote from that policy in the amount of seventy-three hundred forty-two dollars, excuse me, seven thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and sixty cents. That came from the exact same policy. It's the remaining balance that I had concerns with, which was the amount of two hundred forty-two thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. That was the remaining balance from that policy. When I say that they went in that heinous crime when they went in the restroom of my daughter and did the act that was committed, the reason he mentioned five hundred thousand dollars of a half a million dollars he no longer has is because there was another policy, can't think of the name of the company, but Joe Pryor was our insurance agency, he had one. The other money that was mentioned was life ins- excuse me, stock that my father had as a salary employee with John Deere and Company. So that's where the five hundred thousand dollars came from in the number, because it would be confusing if I just showed you this check for two fifty and you want to know where you come up with five hundred thousand. The next thing I want to do, I want to finish that, but I want to take the rest of my time and just inform those that don't know what the Fourteenth Amendment is. It says, "No state shall make, enforce any law which shall abribe by privileges or immunity of a citizen of the United States, nor shall the state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property," when I'm talking about the farmland, and I'll be back about that next time, "without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of law." And I have been denied that and am being denied that. And the prayers we just pledged said liberty and justice for all. I'm being denied that, and we got to get something done about this.
All right. Is there anyone else, yes, sir?
How we doing? Floyd Howard is my name, my first time, and hopefully I'll be coming more often. I've been a long time, I'm fifty-nine years old, living in Waterloo all my life, and I would like to see some beautification in our, in our lower area of Eastside that some people consider. I would like, I would just like our city beautify, our city beyond Logan, East Fourth, and beyond, where it looks kind of dry to me. And I just wish the mayor and city officials a look at it more deeply far as getting our city, our inner city clean, because beyond the, beyond the downtown area and you go up Fourth or other areas, you can tell the difference, and we shouldn't be, and it shouldn't be like that. But with a lot of detailing of our community, from alleys, from trees, to whatever it may be that's needed, it should be done to beautify our city so we can get jobs and other things here in Waterloo. And, and the Chamberlain ground, they say that you can't really do nothing there, that, that ground been there for years, and it's been vacant for years, and there should be something done to that to make it useful instead of letting it sit as it's been sitting for years. The hazardous, whatever case it may be, we should get that checked, and, because I'm thinking that could be a dump site, and when I say dump site, I'm talking about trees and appliances and stuff more closer to our community, instead of hauling stuff elsewhere. I think that Chamberlain spot could be a nice little spot for tree brushes and leaves, small, not major, just small, and more than once every three months. We should have a clean our city down there every month in our city so we don't see appliances in places that shouldn't be, that makes our neighborhood looks ugly. I think that site would be great for that. And vacant homes, I see Rudy and them, they're doing a good job far as getting some homes in there, but along Logan Avenue, I think we need to build that up even more with newer houses along that highway, that stretch, because people are driving up that street seeing a difference, you know, from one side to the other. The one side has newer homes, but the other side doesn't coming up that street, which makes that side looks ugly, and it, and it's, and my neighbor. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, can you state your address for the record so we can have it on file?
Twenty-eight hundred East Fourth.
And we had a conversation too, so it's not saying that Gates isn't being redone, apartments being built and things happening. What we had a conversation also about was our level of code enforcement and working to make sure that alleyways are clear, that people aren't leaving stuff in places and all those areas, so we had a conversation, I mentioned it to Marty as well, and thank you for your comments, sir.
Yep, thank you for listening.
All right, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mary Potter, fourteen sixteen West Fourth, and I happen to be a cheerleader for Grouse Museum. You're being handed around right now some facts and figures for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And I'll start talking so I don't lose my time, okay? And notice at the top, it says we had three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars in donations, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand in grants. Forty-two youth programs were held and ten adult programs, and there were a total of nine hundred and eight participants. Four exhibits took place, hundred and fourteen donations, consisting of thirteen hundred and ninety-nine objects and archives. On here, you can go through the rest of it. It talks about how many counties were served, ninety-seven, forty-four states. In addition, Korea and Mexico were also in attendance at the museum. We have a third grade museum school, and that provided eleven hundred and ninety-five third graders with an experience. I looked through the book and what it told about when people signed their name and then wrote some interesting comment, and I want to read to you just a few of these. It said, "Excellent military museum, awesome, so much stuff, not enough time. Love the planetarium, I loved it, first time, amazing, awesome. Informative, thank you for the history, great experience, fantastic museum, very interesting for our kids. I see many improvements since my third grade field trip fifty years ago. Impressive, go naval, naval history is very moving. Army vet, son of a vet, I had fun, super, wow, I loved it. Twenty-four year vet, thank you for the beautiful museum, great displays. Nice to see something like this, impressive, very impressed. First-class museum, very cool, a Waterloo gem," and I want you guys to think of that the most, a Waterloo gem. "Glad we visited, very cool, first class. We have something in Waterloo that is exceptional, and I will say for about the twenty-eighth time that I think we need to have far more support, and I would hope some of you on the council would feel the same need. If you are looking for a Christmas present for a needy family or for a member of your own family, consider a membership in this museum this year. It will help the museum, and I think the people you give it to will be very happy. Thank you."
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council, Matthew Carpenter for Carpenter's Diner. Sent an email to you guys Saturday morning, most of you should have got that, I hope. Thank Bozen and Greider for responding. Couple points, so Saturday, if you read the email, you understand that all my parking was taken at seven o'clock in the morning. After talking to some of these patrons, they had no idea that we had a parking ramp that was accessible. So my opinion, one thing we looked at is better signage coming off the highways into Waterloo. You know, you're trying to build up the convention center. Some of these people are walking five blocks to get to that convention center, you know, cold weather. It'd be nice if they could get direct to that parking ramp, you got to skywalk right into it. I did some talking with the manager of Convention Center, and the relationship between the two managers of the parking ramp, there is none. And I think if they could work together, the mayor, if you can meet with them, build that relationship and try to fix this parking situation. You know, I paid two people the five dollars for the parking fee to go ahead and move so I could get some parking in front of my restaurant. So, that's about it. Still looking for second grade Ms. Hart teacher coming down. Hope to see her soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Blackwell, and I live in Cedar Falls. I want to ask for prayers for Reverend Stummey and his wife, who are convalescing at home with COVID. Poverty exists across this country in urban and rural areas, in big and small cities and towns. This fact is borne out by research conducted by outstanding data centers that cannot legitimately be ignored or denied. Now, of course, the fact of poverty does not mean that those individuals and families that are poor are perennially unhappy, seeking emotional and social security and the quagmire of despair. Many, if not most, are not poor in spirit and hopeless about the future. Some even assert that in retrospect, when they were younger, they did not know they were poor, but they sure were. Their families may do with what little they had. Just because there are anecdotal descriptions of individual successes does not mean that deep poverty is not adversely affecting the quality of life of the masses. For example, my family lived in the ghettos of Bridgeport, Connecticut, in Fairfield County, one of the richest counties in the nation. We seven siblings knew we were poor. However, we all managed to attend exceptional colleges and universities, too numerous to mention here. Despite these achievements, we never forgot from whence we came. All of us have made sacrifices for the disadvantaged, lifting up the addish that services the rent repay for the privilege of living here on earth. Would that all of us recognize the persistence and the persistent and pernicious influence of poverty around us, the injustices, and would not gloss over it by personal anecdotes, achievements, and ambitions, or intermittent celebrations, ignoring the need to eliminate the social structures, processes, policies, and services that cause a panoply of inequality and impoverishment here and elsewhere. The facts are irrefutable, and we are all morally charged with seeking to eliminate the entrenched, inveterate, and multifarious ways our society perpetuates longstanding inequities. Doing so is always an earnest and urgent necessity, and we must get about the business of focusing on that lest we all perish as fools. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Baumgartner, and I live at eleven thirty, eleven twenty-three Lincoln Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Good evening, Waterloo City Council. It is an honor to be here tonight, outside of being a full-time mom, nurse, and student at Hawke Community College. We are here to address a huge increasing and ongoing issue, reentry housing along with transitional housing. We are focused on providing a service to fulfill the void to individuals reentering society. We want to create a bridge where we as society are failing. It is going to take more than I, we, or even us. It's going to take the support of the entire Cedar Valley. By coming here tonight, we are looking for the community's support and also to offer our support to already established programs. With that being said, on the World Population Review website, it states that recidivism, this recidivism rate in Iowa this year is at thirty-eight point seven percent. The recidivism rate is the major reason of Iowa's highest prison population count in the past eight years. The Waterloo region record states that from twenty-twenty-one until now, homelessness has increased by well over fifty percent. I could pull more statistics, but we all know that this is a devastation to our community and is affecting the community entirely.
Hello, Waterloo City Council. My name is Melissa Gama. My address is seven thirty-six Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. I am the co-founder of the nonprofit organization, The Cedar Valley Hand Up, in continuance to Rachel. Our goal is to open a reentry transitional housing unit right here in the Cedar Valley for men and women being released from prisons, facilities, drug rehabs, mental institutions, and homelessness. We are all impacted by the lack of support these individuals have. August third of twenty-twenty, my brother Jeremiah Ravlofsky hung himself due to lack of support and structure upon reentry to society. Rachel's father, Randall Dawson, became a murder victim twelve twenty-four of two thousand and fourteen, also due to lack of reentry support. He was actually contemplating suicide and stated to Rachel, "I will not go back to prison before he was murdered." My brother and Rachel's father were habitual offenders caught in a vicious cycle. We need you and we need the entire Cedar Valley to help us bridge the gap and break these cycles. At this time, we are open to any questions or advice you may have. Thank you.
Can you, have you emailed any of us about your nonprofit at all?
We have not.
Okay, could you? Okay, could you send an email to us? I think that would be very helpful. I have a friend that perhaps I can, I'd like to bridge a gap a little bit, so if you could email us and give us your contact information, I would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council or mayor?
Good evening, Todd Obadall, one twenty-one Amity Drive. I would like to acknowledge the previous speakers and the sentiments that they offered here in this forum and say that I completely sympathize, empathize, and agree with where they are coming from on these, on these issues. I'd also like to acknowledge the establishment of Waterloo going two and one, and one in the election that happened last month. I would like to offer that some of these ills that are, that are brought up need to be addressed in some fashion outside of a government. To look to a government that will be adding four percent fee to every poor person's energy bill this winter perhaps isn't the most sympathetic or constructive organization to ask for help from. For a government body that puts additional fees onto water services while reducing, eliminating the fees of the airline into this, into this city, perhaps isn't looking out for the interests of the individuals over corporate interests. Perhaps we should look elsewhere. These things should be remembered. When we have individuals talk about transparency in government yet have secret meetings and will not reveal what changes their minds on issues that months were spent on, perhaps we should look elsewhere. This past week, I was reviewing the, the court case where a local firm had to sue the previous developer that was brought in for the convention center, just one of many businesses that lost money from this person that was brought in here to save the convention center. In that, in, in that court transcript, it mentioned how when they went to finalize the contract and sign the contract, and they went to Omaha to have the contract signed, the contract was signed by the developer, they went to look at, look at the property, and they came back to the meeting room and all the papers were gone, and then the developer didn't pay and said there was no written contract because the, the business firm didn't have it. Well, the court ruled that there was enough actions that demonstrated that there was a contract that was being effectuated, and that developer, who was allowed to come here and display documents, but no photographs could be taken because it was all private, it's all a big shuffle show, that this was also put forth by this city government. I ask my citizens to reach out to other citizens individually and, and seek bettering our community on a one-to-one basis instead of looking solely to our government for the solutions, because it seems like they don't have the interest of the little person in mind. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on non-agenda related items? Going a second time. Is there anyone else that would, that is going to be recognized by the chair to come up with comments, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close public coming, public comments.
A motion's been made with the second. The motions. The motions. That motion, that motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A one those payments for November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three in the amount of five million three hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and eighteen cents, and for December fourth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of three million two hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam, that is.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
You guys all like it.
We'll do it for this, and then we'll go back to the electronic after.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Whatever you guys want to do.
All right, thank you. You bought that system, we're going to use that.
I think you guys just missed hearing me talk.
All right, so, so really quick, do we have Dustin Knight here somewhere, Dustin? All right, Dustin, if you're listening, has been promoted to, well, the appointment of Equipment Operator One with our street department, subject to pre-employment, physical, and testing. And we also have Christopher Schmitz, who's going to be of the Board of Adjustments, new partial addition to our Board of Adjustment. Are you here? No? All right, and last but definitely not least, and we want him to come up here and take his seat, Mr. Sean Page has been interim director for the Center for Arts for some time now. Also was the curator for a couple of years, right? A decade. I got shoes older than a decade now. But has been promoted to Director for the Center for Arts, replacing longtime person with the city, Kent Shankle, so congratulations, Sean. Keep on, it's not time to slow up, keep on pushing that gas pedal and keep doing incredible things within that department, so we look forward to your leadership. All right, and just really quickly, definitely have to recognize India Johnson. She's on the conclusion of employment, but we definitely want to give our heartfelt thank you to all of her efforts and her family. They've gone through a tough time with her passing, and so did have a chance to go to the funeral, and she will be greatly missed, so seeing that name on here kind of touched my heart a little bit. So definitely want to send our thoughts, thoughts and prayers, or whatever you do, to her family as well. All right, number one.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and ask for a request by the City of Waterloo on behalf of H and A Elsie to rezone approximately sixty acres from A dash one agricultural district to M dash two P planned industrial district located east of two nine five zero Newell Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine. As amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance, by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by the City of Waterloo on behalf of H and A Elsie to rezone approximately sixty acres from A dash one agricultural district to dash two P planned industrial district located east of two nine five zero Newell Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
At the planning and zoning meeting, it was brought up that the owners of this property did not request this rezoning, the city requested it.
Right.
And then it was also mentioned that if we found a suitable industry or whatever to come here, that we would purchase the land from them as, as part of this, their development agreement. My issue with this land is there's a wetlands that runs right down through the center of this property, and it's on the Army Corps of Engineers and the, and the Fish and Wildlife, National Fish and Wildlife Site. We've dealt with wetland issues in the, in the past where we've put ourselves in, in debt trying to, trying to repair and remediate and create new wetlands, and I just have an issue with. an issue with rezoning this with the plans to build on it if we're going to be entering into a problem with wetlands.
Noel, could you talk about this property with regards to wetland and usage?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So yeah, there are some wetlands in that area. We would definitely be addressing them as part of the development of the site, probably rerouting them to a, a property line, or depending upon the size of the project, rerouting them to avoid the project building site or, or parking area and all that. One of the things when we're, when we're working with the larger prospects, which we have one looking at this area, is you're generally dealing with, you know, competition with, with fifty sites or more, and there's a checklist of what they want to see in a site. And so we're, we're basically, if you think of the NCAA tournament, March Madness, you're trying to make it to the next bracket, one of the things that they are asking for is if, is the site properly zoned at this time? So obviously, we'll, we'd like to get the zoning done so we can check yes if the entire site is, is zoned properly. The prospect we're looking at is, is larger than, than what this acreage is, so it would be this land plus others out there, but it's a very large prospect that would be worthwhile if we got it to try and work with it. We're, we're picking this site and the area around it because of the existence of the large ability for water and sewer to meet the prospect needs as well as the rail, and we've been partnering with Iowa Northern to look at the rail options for the site.
And then my concern, and I, and if he's going to be combining an additional site, is that it basically runs right down through the center of that land. And so it's really limits what you can do on either side of it.
Well, we just don't want the prospect to know it's going to limit what they can do with it, so.
Okay, now that's on the record.
Yeah, it's on the record. Yeah, we're competing right now.
And, and we can, we can work with, with engineering, with, we've been talking to A E Com Engineering about the prospects of how we would move the, the drainage way through the area. There's a process called the clomer, and it's a letter of map revision, conditional letter of map revision, so we could go ahead and do the engineering to show the Army Corps and everyone how we would move the, the drainage way and all that to still come through the area, but make the site more usable. So that's something we'd be working to do to show a prospect, here's exactly how we will mitigate the drainage way in the area to make it a usable site.
All right. All right, council, any other questions? All right, that is an electronic vote. Please cast your votes for the rezone. All right, that passes one vote of no from Mr. Bozen. Who's, Mr. Greider?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, and whether or not you support it, be great to get this rezoned so the prospect can look at this property. All right, electronic vote, please. All right, we'll bring it back next week. All right, let's go to number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a request by Prairie Rapids Two LLC for site plan amendment to, to construct a forty-eight unit multifamily residential building in the S dash one shopping center district located east of three one two one Kimball Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to the ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by Prairie Rapids Two LLC for a site plan amendment to construct a forty-eight unit multifamily residence building in the S dash one shopping center district located east of three one two one Kimball Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions on this item? Going a second time. That is a electronic vote. Please cast your vote. All right, they pass unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, electronic vote. All right, that passed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. If council, you don't have any questions, please cast your votes. All right, thank you, council. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-four fiber optic outside plant OSP construction, Economic Development Administration, EDA, award number zero five dash seven nine dash zero six one eight five, contract number one zero eight six.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, do you need any explanation on this? Jamie's on if you do. All right, that is an electronic vote. Please cast your votes. All right, thank you, council. That passed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct a city clerk to read the bids and refer to city engineer for further review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, our estimate for this was two million five hundred and three thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. We received two bids. First one was from M P Next Level LLC of Maple Lake, Minnesota. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two million four hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars seventy-nine cents. Our second and final bidder was Price Industrial Electric of Robbins, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two million ninety-five thousand sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
All right, thank you. Resolutions, could someone take one, two, and three?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. The first is resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and dis, uh, disbursement agreement by and between the City of Waterloo, Iowa, and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of one million fourteen thousand dollars in sewer revenue capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-three C of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, and under provisions of the Iowa, of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, approval of tax exemption, exemption certificate, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second is a resolution approving an amendment to the development agreement with Prairie Rapids Two LLC, and to include the CLURA partial tax exemption schedule located near the southeast corner of Kimball Avenue and Ridgeway Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number three is a resolution accepting a public sidewalk easement from Waterloo Community School District to allow for the placement of a public sidewalk along West Sixth Street on school-owned property directly adjacent to eleven fifteen West Fifth Street Irving Elementary School.
Second.
All right, thank you. For resolutions one, two, and three, do we have any comments on those items? Council, anyone? All right, could you please cast your electronic votes, please? Thank you, those three passed. Four, five, and six, please.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a second amendment to the real estate purchase agreement with Aline Ventures for the purchase of two hundred East Mullin Avenue to amend the closing date to honor before December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. A resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement with Cedar Valley Tech Works Inc. approving a deed to sell real property to the City of Waterloo in the amount of two thousand four hundred sixty dollars located northwest of twenty-five West Commercial Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And six is a resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement with Cedar Valley Tech Works Inc. approving a deed to sell real property to the City of Waterloo in the amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty dollars located southwest of twenty-five West Commercial Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these three items on the agenda? Council, anyone?
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
And that would be on, on number four for Noel. The, the first, the first amendment dealt with hazard assessment, and I was just curious if they identified any hazards on that site as of this time.
No.
Sorry, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. They did identify what, we believe there may be an underground tank there with some pipes out of the ground. The size of them and the history of the site, we believe it to be very small, so we want to move ahead, but that did take a little bit extra work to try to do some research on, on what was out there, but we are recommending moving ahead with the acquisition, just give it a bit more time to do it.
And on number five and six, on this real estate purchase agreement, is this money coming out of the two point seven million that we authorized for the groundwork for the hardcore, or is this above and beyond the two point seven million the city's investing?
No.
This would be above, this would be above the two point seven million. These are actually across the street over by the Winter Bottom. Number six is a parking lot, a thirty-sol parking lot that we thought would be beneficial to have additional public parking due to the proximity to the sportsplex, to the hardcourts that are coming, Young Arena and all that, so to make that public parking. And then number five is actually there's a very small parcel, but it's up near the intersection of River Road and West Commercial Street. Due to that small amount and the, the small price, we thought it might be helpful to have that in case we had to, with the hardcore coming, if we had to do additional right-of-way changes or road improvements there for turning lanes or something.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, electronic vote, please. All right, thank you. Could someone take number one, please? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt, make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time an ordinance approving a request by Schatz Trucking LLC for a rezone of approximately two point nine three acres from A dash one agricultural district to C dash one, C dash Z conditional zoning district to allow for a trucking business at four thirty-eight West High Lane, West Airline Highway.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, anyone? Questions? Electronic vote, please.
Yes.
All right, thank you, council.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Council.
I passed.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, electronic vote, please.
I passed.
All right, thank you, council. Number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time an ordinance, amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone approximately point zero seven four, zero point seven four acres from A one agricultural district to M dash two P planned industrial district located at thirteen eighteen Martin Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone with any questions on these items? Council? Electronic vote, please. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Electronic vote, please. If no questions. All right, thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, please, cast your votes. All right, pass. Just to remind everyone, tomorrow, please get out and vote.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you, council.
Thank you.